All right, I will call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7:01 PM on Monday, December 18th, 2023 in Millville, Massachusetts. If everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a quick round of introductions, starting at the far end.
Roland Banner, Richard Remus, Andrew Alward.
Jennifer Gill.
Peter Caruso, Town Administrator.
Matthew Maile.
Hey.
Kate Donovan, President of the Blackstone and Millville Garden Club.
Thank you.
Not a citizen of Millville, but on the other side, Stonestoke from Millville.
All right, so since Kate's at the table, we'll start with 3B. Blackstone Millville Garden Club with Kate Hart Donovan. So we have, Kate, just to kind of update you, we have this plot of land by the police station that's a playground. It's not pretty at the moment. And so Roland went with a police officer and he suggested, why don't we use this for the garden club? They love the more land, we could put a cute little gazebo and it would look be a nice little area. So that's why I reached out to you and said, what are your thoughts on this? Is this something you'd be interested in?
The thought I have, I mean, we're always looking for more space. Actually, we had a, we were looking for, you know, the opportunity to put up a little greenhouse for all our stuff, seed starting and all that kind of stuff. We could definitely do it. The thing is, if you want to do a lot of perennials, I'm concerned with the soil. Has anybody done any testing with that soil?
Absolutely not.
Yeah.
No way.
Not, not the thought that we would, certainly could grow food plants in elevated raised beds and, and, you know, there's other techniques that you use. You use straw bale gardening and I know the guy that wrote that book. If anyone's ever heard of him, he's a really nice guy. And hay bale gardening as well. So I, we have some materials that we can use, but making a really pretty ornamental garden. My only concern is humans don't eat ornamental flowering plants. However, the, the pollinators do and they have a rough go of it. So that's my only concern about, you know, growing a lush, I mean, unless we had the soil tested. I don't know what's underneath there. Is there cement underneath there or is there just dirt underneath there or?
Well, as far as I remember, it's, it's that all that mulch was put down on dirt.
Okay, so it's probably all broken down by now. Maybe it isn't that bad.
But we're gonna scrape that out and get somebody to donate some loom.
Well, we can try to do that and we always do. We try to be as frugal as we can. You know, we, getting some loom probably wouldn't be a big deal. Getting the good compost that we need. However, I do have a guy that will deliver it for, it ends up being a dollar a square foot. He has a horse farm and it's always better to get people that have manure as a, as a side product for their real business because they are more than happy to get rid of it. They just charge a little bit of a fee to truck it in.
I don't know anyone else like that.
I do, yeah, I, I do. I do commercial gardening, by the way. I have a business, not that I'm trying to solicit business, but, so I've done a lot of research. So we could certainly do it, you know, but if, like I say, we would, we would probably use some elevated raised beds and unless, you know, unless you wanted, you had a different vision, I'm sorry, what's your name, Roland?
Roland, yeah.
Unless you had a vision that you really wanted some pretty, a nice gazebo and some ornamental plants.
Oh, I, I, I thought vegetables.
Yeah.
And have a little gazebo to sit down and have a coffee after all your hard work.
Yeah.
You know, or people can just go and enjoy the, the vegetable garden.
What we wanted to do in Blackstone, but we never did it, is we, we wanted to do a memorial garden for that house of horrors over there. That's actually taught, was in, being taken by the town. There's kind of a memory garden and, and all that and, and we didn't get the opportunity to do it. You, we really tend, if that's, you know, what the vision is, we could do it. You can actually take cuttings and, you know, dig up half the plant and, because sometimes you need to split your plants up anyway. So it's something we could design and, and, and work towards.
Yeah, I basically thought it would be up to you folks to how it would look best.
Whatever you want to plant, what makes the most sense.
We, we said we have that decent sized piece of land right there.
It is, it's doing nothing. Every time we, we go over there and do the work, Jennifer's been over there helping us make the compost and all, she's been over there and, you know, every time we go by it, it's like, jeez, this is a, this is a shame that, you know, we have all this land and it's, it's going, you know, not.
And that's already fenced in?
It's already fenced in and we would want that as well.
Yeah, no, I mean, yeah.
So, yeah. No, I mean, we're, we're certainly interested. I have to talk to my board.
Yeah.
I was gonna bring Lisa Foster here. She's from, she's from Millville. She's my backup, my vice president, but I don't know if she even has power right now. So it's a bit trepidatious to her again.
So, I mean, and you mentioned the greenhouse. I don't care myself if the money, instead of investing money into a little gazebo, we invest it into a little greenhouse.
Actually, we have a greenhouse.
You do, all right.
But, but we haven't been able to get a place to put it up because it was too, the earth was too unstable. I think it's fairly flat there. We'll have to check it out. We have to go in and check it out.
It's, it's very flat because it was a playground.
Yeah. I'll talk to Mark Robinson about it because he did it before. And I, and I want you to know that I, I, so all the, even before the, I'm not complaining, honestly. Every time I ask somebody from Millville to come out and volunteer, they're not all members of the garden club, but they always do. The town always comes forth and, and responds and does what they can. So we really have a whole heck of a lot of volunteers. But I did speak to Kevin, this is a couple of years ago, he sent me a message or an email or something and said that there was money in there that was, you know, could be used for the, for the garden club. And we can always use money. Trust me, not for me, because, you know, the, the compost and materials and all that kind of stuff and we're organic. We give money to the food pantry, plus we deliver to Tina from the senior center in Karen and in, in, in Blackstone. So, so, I mean, we, we do wonderful work. But he said he had money and then it, once we incorporated and we, we're now a 501(c)(3) and I sent him, you know, a couple of emails and, and he didn't respond. I don't know if he was mistaken or if there was some kind of money that was in that fund.
So that's the recreation department, which has money every year to spend and it often doesn't spend it. So, and, and this year, some was spent to buy some park benches, basically. You know, we have a couple here and.
I get that, I get that.
So he has money available to use and originally there was some thinking that that might become, that playground might become, you know, a basketball court, but this seems like a much better, low-impact thing because the other aspect is there's some question whether there's a leaching field there. So the basketball court wouldn't be a very good solution if there was.
Does the town have the plans to know exactly where the, where the leaching field is?
No, and we've had somebody look for it and we still don't know. But so, but so the point is, to the extent there are roots that go down, that is a concern, maybe. But I think what you're describing and, you know, the vision that we've got out of Roland and so forth makes perfect sense. I mean, gee whiz. It's space that a bunch of dangerous equipment that's rotten away comes out of, that people are volunteered to take out, that you could use for your purposes, however. And even the greenhouse, jeez, if you've got one.
Right, right.
Beautiful, right? That's a great thing. So it's just more space for you to utilize besides what you're getting behind the building.
And that's an issue as well. We, a lot of the members in the garden club are like myself, retired women. I happen to be physically fit enough, but it's a, it's an issue. You're going downhill to get in there. So, you know, so it would certainly be more, you know, friendlier to people with, you know, with physical challenges. So, yeah, we could certainly, we could certainly take a look at it and, yeah.
And I, and I mentioned to Jerry Finn, who's, who's our representative at Valley Tech for the town of Millville, saying, jeez, I wonder if the carpentry department would build the raised beds.
Right. They might, but I gotta tell you something. I have gone, I have gone through, I can't tell you because I do, I do commercial work on my own, not the garden club, right? So a lot of the Boy Scouts did the, the raised beds and then they fill them.
Yeah.
And they fill them with dirt. You don't fill raised beds with dirt. You fill it with compost, you fill it with loom, you fill it with vermiculite. You gotta, you gotta do it or, or the, or the plants won't grow. I can't tell you how much time I've spent moving the dirt and putting in garden soil. So anyway, they could do it and they would have to listen to me to, to, to fill it and we, you know, work.
Well, they wouldn't, they, I don't think they would come out to.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But they'll build the boxes. That's one job done.
Oh, yeah, that'd be good.
But do we need raised beds? I'm sorry to interrupt you, but do we need raised beds? That's a maybe question, right?
No, I mean, so.
One thing that helps is you don't have to bend over so far to weed it. That's one thing.
Okay.
So like she said, there's some that aren't as fortunate as she is to be physically fit.
But you're talking food for raised beds, unless you do perennials, right?
We have perennial foods as well, like, you know, asparagus and strawberries and all that kind of stuff. But if you want to do a really nice area where you have your, your flowering plants, your, you know, your daisies, your rhododendrons and your hydrangeas and all that kind of stuff, really decorative around there, then, you know, that, it may be an issue, it just may be an issue digging into the ground, but we could always test it, right?
Yeah.
And then the other thing, Roland, is to get the, to get the, the people at the BMR involved as well. I have sent messages to Dr. DeFalco, you know, to say, listen, we're doing this, can, if there's anybody that's interested, because I gladly sign off on any, any paperwork, this is good work. These are good skills. They should teach growing food in, in, in school anyway, but in any case. So I, I haven't really heard anything from him, but it would really be nice to, to get some, some volunteers. And sometimes we have in the past gotten volunteers for the National Ornithists, my son was in the National Ornithist Society, I guess they, that's mandated. But we've got a couple of kids that just really liked to guard. They're like me, you know, there's, there's a magic when they put their fingers in the dirt. Not everybody's like that, but really, some kids really, really enjoy it, you know, de-stress. So we can try all avenues. So, so, yeah, so let me look into it. I'll get, I'll get the people down and I'll let you go. But I do want to tell you something else that, you know, we are, I don't know if you know this, but we're putting in a free seed bank at the, at the Millville Library. I get hundreds and hundreds of packages of free seeds. People donate them. People like my work, you know, the work that we do. Big companies, Baker Creek, Botanical Interest, Burpee. So in theory, a pack of seeds, once it's December 31st, the seed pack is not sellable, but the seeds last between four or five years. I'll be darned if I'm gonna let all those seeds go to waste. So we have one in, in Blackstone. It was a big hit. So I talked to Alyssa and Lynn Foley and we're gonna set a date for, for July, ah, January, late January, and I'm gonna come in, I'm gonna explain to them all about how to store seeds, you know, how to harvest them, you storm cool, dark and dry, which seeds have a short lifespan. Because really, the, the thing is, we don't really want to have, have to, the best seed that grows in my yard is the same plant that, that grew in your yard because we're all local, right? So we want to become a more sustainable Millville. So that's the plan. Anyway, just something else to throw at you.
So, thank you. That's a good announcement for everyone to know.
I'll send it out there and let you folks know when we have that rollout. If anyone could attend, I really do appreciate the, we're non-political, you know, group, FYI, but we really do appreciate the support of the town. It made the wor, it made a world of difference when you came down that time and, and got your hands dirty because I had asked some other people and they didn't show. So, is anything else, you have anything else for me?
No, so I guess, so we'll look for you to talk about it with your group.
I'm gonna talk about it with my team, basically Mark, Mark Robinson and Lisa Foster. And then we can go and take a look and then we can get back to you. But I, I like your vision, Roland. I appreciate it, so.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Have a holiday to everybody.
Yep, same deal.
Bye. All right. So great. So move to 3A, the annual license renewals.
Right.
Continued, so there's two.
Yep, so there are two licenses plus two other things I'm gonna ask you to sign. One is, it's just the seasonal population estimate of the town and we have a number here that's provided by the town clerk. So it's the current number and you, as the Board of Selectmen, will sign that, okay? And separately, it's a renewal certification that has to go to the, the state. And it says that there were no new licenses granted and no new licensees were disapproved by the town, okay? So, so those things need your signatures as well. And then the licenses are the Mill Tavern Pizza Common Victualer License and Marty's Fine Wine All Alcohol Retail Liquor License. Those are both here. Everybody got their information in on time and all files are complete and ready for your approval and signature.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Andrew, you want to do the licenses and then we'll figure out this one?
So I'll make, so I'll make a motion to approve the, you know, license renewal of Mill Tavern's Pizza Common Victualer License and Marty's Fine Wine All Alcohol Retail Liquor License.
Thank you, Andrew, looking for a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Roland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Matthew?
Aye.
All right.
Do we need to do a motion for the?
The other two, yes.
Population.
So Peter, is this a motion?
So on one of them, it just says the estimate was made and voted upon by us. So you're voting that the estimated, the temporary resident population as of July 10th, 2024 will be 3,038.
Okay.
Okay?
So I'll make a motion that we accept this estimate of the population of Millville as of July 20th, 20, sorry. It says estimate the temporary increase of Millville as of July 10th, 2024.
Correct, that's what they want.
All right. So as of July, yeah. Let me start again. I will make a motion that the, that the, that we accept the estimated temporary increased resident population of Millville as of July 10th, 2024 will be 3,038 and signed by the Board of Selectmen. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Richard, skip you.
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
Okay, so this one, you have licensees that you have no licensees who failed to renew for 2024 and you have no licensees disapproved by the licensing authority for 2024.
So I'll make a motion to sign the renewal certification of 2024, that Millville has no new license applications and has not disapproved any licenses.
Perfect. Thank you, Andrew, looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Matthew. Matthew wanted in on the action. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Roland?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Aye. Matthew?
Aye.
Okay.
I think I've just got you distracted with my.
It is, it was, it was the t-shirt.
Optimism is, you know, is my perk, so.
I like it. Santa. It's a great movie. You gotta watch it every year.
It is.
Okay, and so now we will move on to, oh, sorry, what am I doing? Is it my folder silly? Okay. So Peter, you want to take us to?
Yep, so I just included in this, you know, the current draft of this budget guidance memo, which hasn't really changed. I did add one qualifier line item on the second page, item two, where it talks about the fact that we're likely to see, need an additional 60 grand for MES water and the qualifier I put in, if the town continues not to adhere to the terms of the regional agreement, okay? And then I also put in a qualifier, a three, that I just added, one critical metric important to the town for each of these schools is cost per student rate of increases. So for example, we had the discussion with Jerry, talking about BVT here, and there's been some email interchange back and forth regarding whether there was an 8% increase that I vaguely recollected. And there was in terms of the metric of cost per student. The cost didn't go up overall to the town by that amount, but the cost per student is a metric. And this year where we're gonna, he said that we're gonna have the same number of students at BVT, that's, you know, we kind of have a pool when you have Proposition Two and a Half and, you know, new growth, you roughly have 3% to play with, okay? And the 150 grand that's estimated in this letter is based upon that, okay? It's based on both the Two and a Half and estimate, estimate of new growth. And so with 3%, that's what I'm looking for. And if you come over that, as take, in the case of, you know, BVT as, and I don't mean to pick on BVT, but if it comes in at 5%, well, whatever that 2% extra is, has to come from somewhere. And the question is, where?
Richard's salary.
You know, that's right. So, but, but you know, so that's why I, I've kept all the other things, including, you know, the guidance of non-union departments. And that's the one I just want to, you know, be a little passionate about that one in particular because we have people who, you know, work, worked very hard for, you know, could do better at McDonald's for the, what they do. And they never caught up with, you know.
The growth.
The growth, the coal, you know, the increases, the inflation. But this board has been proactive, at least in going for the 3% for the last couple of years as a way to mitigate the pain of inflation for folks. Unlike other communities, you know, they worked right through, this place was open right through COVID and this, you know, there was no allocation of CARES Act money nor ARPA money for paying folks for going above and beyond during COVID, unlike other communities. So I, I'm, I'm gonna fight any, so I, I urge that you stick with what I recommend here. That's, that's, that's my point.
Okay.
Okay? And we'll make it, I'll find a way to try to make it work within, absent, you know, other big increases that are beyond my control.
Okay.
And we'll see what the math works when we get there.
So should we approve this today or do you want to wait until the 8th and then you'll send it?
Well, I think we'll wait till the 8th. That allows you to dwell on it, think about it, ask questions and, you know, maybe something's different between now and then.
Yeah.
I might have more information. So for example, I was supposed to meet with Dr. DeFalco today for a preview of his budget, but because of school closing and the weather and all that, we couldn't connect. So we, we're planning to connect tomorrow. So I'll be able to update you on sort of the first look of what the world might be like from a BMR perspective.
Anyone else have any comments?
I will gladly donate my salary here.
The whole thing? That's very generous.
And with a smile, no doubt, right?
Smiling's my favorite. My favorite, Peter.
You're the man.
All right.
I'll even donate Roland's.
Yep.
What the heck?
I was gonna give it to you, hey.
Well.
Okay.
I'm not preparing my taxes, though.
All right, so the boss survey that we talked about, that, talk about doing it again. So as I mentioned, I thought we should maybe separate the financials from other things because I think the financial is gonna get complicated and we need to have some explanations and things like that with that survey. So for, I wanted to talk about maybe kind of like non, non-money related questions and maybe I should be more specific, say specific like money questions. So keep it kind of higher level. So for example, I still think we should have an open-ended question on like, what do you think are the challenges that are facing the town? Do you have any suggestion for your, the challenge that you've mentioned? Richard Herto was here at a meeting before and he said, you know, if you would be willing to put together a committee to look at new business opportunities to get new revenues for the town, would you be interested? Like he asked if we'd be interested in doing that. Should we think about asking people, do you have any business ideas for the town? Would you like to be part of a committee for that? I know the town moderator asked if we could have a question, like, would you be interested in joining the capital planning committee or the finance committee or any other specific committees because those are all short-staffed at this time? And then I think that we should also ask a question around buildings. So like for the elementary school, you know, do you have a strong, do you feel strongly it should stay as part of the regional school district or not? I kind of flipped how it was said before, so let's keep, move it this way. And the reason I want that in there is I'm, I want to know how we should represent the town's opinion on the feasibility study when those results come out. So if they're like, no, we definitely want the elementary school to be part of the school district, you know, forever and ever and ever, that I want to make sure that we articulate the town's voice on that. So those are just kind of my thoughts. I should write them down before I forget them because I will. Any other thoughts?
That's one way to hopefully get people involved.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't watch these meetings to know that we're that shorthanded.
Well, I don't think anybody's really watching this meeting tonight. There's no power in town.
Right. But it's recorded, it'll be on YouTube.
It'll be a few days later. After Thursday, probably.
Right.
Okay.
Would have been a good time to invest in generators.
I have a question, just out of curiosity, the, for the towns, like for us to attract businesses, do we have much commercial space available? I mean.
Well, we have zoning, but we don't have, you know, there's nothing existing commercial space. We have the challenge of, you know, well water and septic, which limits growth. The one commercial space that, you know, we had set up for that lifted luxury, I went to, I went by there a week ago and it looked like the owners of the property were doing something. There was a dumpster outside, so perhaps they're configuring that, but I don't know for some other tendency.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we have much available commercial space.
That's a good question. Could we maybe get for the June 8th meeting, a map of like the intersection of 122 and Central Street in Lincoln?
That's where it is, but I don't know how much of it would be available.
So it'd be a zoning map. You want to see a zoning map and what's, yeah, maybe get a planner in here to talk to you about what's available.
I feel like there's a decent amount of buildings there, so space-wise, there's, they'd have to either buy out somebody's land or something of that, which is complicated.
St. Augustine's.
There is that, yeah.
That's right.
It's a good-sized property and a nice facility.
Sure is.
Okay. Sorry, Andrew, did I interrupt you?
That was, that was my point.
Okay.
Or stable.
Yeah. Do that, can do that.
Anyone else? Any other ideas on the survey? And I'll go back and review what we sent the last time to and pick up kind of more the non-financial questions. All right. I, we have a public forum. Is anyone have any question, anything we talked about so far? And I'll, okay, so we have, we'll still have public forum if you want to come up and talk about anything you want as well, but, okay. So old business, so Peter, I'll turn it over to you to give us our MES water status updates.
Okay, and I'll try to do it from here, so we have it on the screen. I did this presentation for the school committee. Andrew, Matthew and Jen were there, but you two gents weren't there and you may not have watched the show. So I'll give you the shorter version and it was pretty short when I gave it, I think, anyway.
You were pretty short.
Yeah.
For real.
Yeah, I'm short in nature, but tall and I don't know what, you know, stories. So anyway, um, let's see if this works. It does. So, uh, when I first, you know, one of the slides is just a broad overview. You've seen some of this before. If you think about what the water is all about there, it's what you'd call hard water. And it's all about removing iron and manganese. And to do that, you use chlorine, we'll, I'll show you the system a little bit. But the thing for which we've been providing notices and the notices that were, you know, made the school folks, uh, get to a point where they moved the children, was we were putting out notices for haloacetic acids, the H A five that's listed there. And we, you'll see that we have that pretty well under control. Newly surfaced was the total trihalomethanes came up. You'll also see that we have that under control now. So we're doing pretty good. The water demand, because there's no students, has been very low. That made it more challenging for the operator to manage the system, but they did it. Uh, we have, uh, remote, uh, monitoring, which is allowed, you know, the operator to control things better. And we also, uh, plan to have in the near term automated controls, which will allow the system to vary the chlorine that goes into the chlorine that's coming out and that impacts all these nasty things that we have to send nasty letters home to folks on. Uh, big shout out by Rich, as he did last time, was, uh, to Scott, Matt and Denise, because they were very helpful throughout this process. And McLaur engineering, you know, they had committed to us way back in, uh, early August, maybe right at the very end of July, whenever we first met with them. But they really didn't come with a contract, because they couldn't deal with us until of late. And they've now signed contracts for, two, two contracts with the town. One is for them to do the preliminary, uh, engineering of the pipeline from, uh, Oxbridge, if that ever comes to fruition. And also they're the engineer for the operations now. So that's good. And, uh, and, and, and so we're good. And now I just want to go over a little bit again about the, uh, system itself. The system is actually a pretty darn good system. It was put in by the prior engineer and operator. And it, you know, the key to it all is, um, if you look at it, it's a well, that well's a hundred, a thousand feet deep. The pump is four hundred and fifty feet down. The water comes up, it goes into a bag filter to pull, you know, the big sediment out. Then chlorine is added, okay? And you see that, you know, on the side there, chlorine's added to the green sand filter system. And the filters are, I don't know, eighteen inches in diameter, six feet, seven feet tall. There's two of them, they alternate depending on, uh, demand. And, you know, keeping the chlorine, the green sand active requires continuing to give it chlorine. It pulls the manganese and the iron out of the water. And it then puts that water into a storage tank that's, uh, can hold up to ten thousand gallons. I think right now it varies between thirty, five hundred and five thousand gallons is what's in there because of the demand. But the key is that what needs to be monitored is what chlorine comes out to a certain degree. And Dr. Gulick has been very careful about that. That really is, if it goes too high, you're gonna get the disinfection byproducts. If it goes too low, you're gonna get brown water. So you, you keep that and you add the chlorine or add less chlorine, depending on what's your reading coming out of there. That treated water comes out of the storage tank. When you turn the faucet on, it goes into a pressure tank and then it goes through a U V fil, you know, U V light that does the disinfection. The chlorine doesn't do the disinfection, it's the U V light, right? And then they add, it's called corrosion control, which years ago, maybe rolling back, when you were involved, they had lead and copper issues, I think, many years ago. It's, it tests beautifully for lead and copper these days. And it's part because it squirts in a little bit of this stuff. And, you know, it has to do it right, has to, thing, you know, the system has to work. And the finished water goes out to the building. So they've, it's, it'd been a chemistry. I'm gonna talk a little bit about, uh, you see the, the magic, I call it, the magic happens though, around that green sand filter, putting the chlorine in and monitoring the chlorine coming out. And way back in February, there was what I call an event where things happened. The, the green sand filtration died, there was a widget that failed and so forth. Got very brown water. And during that event, that impacted some of the results we've seen since. And I'm gonna get to a screen to that, uh, shortly. I do want to emphasize, though, that there's a whole bunch of stuff that the water is tested for, for which it, really nasty stuff. And the water tests very well for it. So you can see up there bacteria, tests beautifully for bacteria. Lead and copper, it's managed well. Synthetic organic compounds, that's nasty stuff, no problem. Uh, volatile organic com, compounds or chemicals, no problem. Heavy metals, really bad stuff, no problem. P F A S, we're testing well on that and you'll see that in a bit. But it will be a concern going forward. Radiological substance, nitrates, nitrates, pesticides, algae, taste and odor, all good, okay? So it's really just the disinfection byproduct. This slide's a quick one, you've seen it before, I don't want to dwell on it, but it basically just shows, you know, if you look at it, uh, on the, in the first side, the manganese, you see a, the, the, the blue triangles are, uh, the effluent or the water that's been treated, how it comes out. The orange circles are the raw water coming in. So you see in January, February timeframe, it really spiked up. You see that blue circle, that blue diamond, uh, triangle way up there. That's where the event occurred, okay? When the, the, a valve on the pump that put the chlorine in failed and also when the green sand filter failed, because it wasn't maintained properly in terms of the levels of chlorine, is how I would argue. Since then, you see that the water coming in has remained the same at a, you know, that level of, uh, manganese, but non-detector essentially all pulled out of the system, pulled out of the water. Likewise, on the iron, on the right, we have the same sort of thing. And you see a spike at the event time that I described, okay? And we can certainly talk about that more. This slide is quickly just to show, you see in the right column there, some numbers and some things that happened. And, and Dr. Gulick was all excited about this, because basically what it shows is he had a spike in chlor, uh, spike in iron and he had a spike in total organic compounds. And the system took it all out of there without any trouble. So what he's highlighted in yellow, then on the right is the effluent, it's not, you know, right at the right levels. So that just shows the system's working, if you pay attention to it. And here, this really shows the system's working, because since July, we've been well below, uh, all of the, uh, metrics. The metric is sixty parts per billion for haloacetic acids. And we've ranged in the twenty-two, you know, high one was forty-two, forty-three in the six months that, uh, Dr. Gulick has, you know, basically been running the system and that's paying attention to the chlorine. You can also see in February, huge spike in the disinfection byproduct haloacetic acid, right? It's up at two forty-nine. And the notices are based upon quarterly averages, as you may recall. And that event in February really, you know, skewed, uh, us so that we're gonna actually, in the beginning of January, gonna have to send out another notice because of the quarterly averaging, even though we've had six months of very good results, okay? And that haloacetic acid is the one that was plaguing, and I don't call it plaguing, it's just the challenging and has resulted in notices in the past. For the first time on the next slide, we had to deal with total trihalomethanes and that surfaced. And once the remote monitoring came into play, you can see in the, he highlighted in October, November, December, Dr. Gulick got it under control, because he, you know, he's been monitoring that thing. There too, we see a spike in February. So we're gonna have another notice that's gonna go out probably in the beginning of January, based on the averaging. Also, on both of these, you know, Mast D E P sets their maximum contaminant level criteria. Sixty for the haloacetic acids per, parts per billion. It's eighty parts per billion for this, what we have on the slide right there, sixty on the other one. But it's based on, you know, lab tests of rat, lab rats, I'm pretty sure is what they use. And they, uh, jam them up with disinfection byproducts and try to equate that to a person's lifespan for the health effects that one might have. And, you know, it's two liters of consumption every day, uh, for seventy years straight is where you would get the health impacts of these particular, uh, gremlins in the water, if you will. And likewise, on the, uh, cooking part of it, for pasta or rice, you know, it's over twenty servings a day for seventy years straight. That said, the most, uh, prone to, uh, challenges, health challenges would be expectant and pregnant, you know, pregnant mothers and nursing mothers. And so that, there, the seventy-year rule, I don't know what the time period is, but it's basically shorter than seventy years for the risk, okay? This slide just talks about the quarterly averages. I won't dwell on that, just to say what I've already said. We're gonna have to do notices, because we've got the quarterly averages. Uh, sorry, this one. Uh, this slide, P F A S, okay? We've been, uh, it's a, set in the state at twenty parts per trillion. And I had used an analogy at the school meeting of the, the space we were in over there and said, fill it with sand and twenty parts per trillion would be twenty grains of sand. I since watched the Mary Jude Pigsley and she said that the trillion is actually a, an Olympic-sized swimming pool.
Yeah.
So almost this building.
Yeah.
Full of sand and you pull out twenty grains. That's, we gotta have less than twenty grains in the testing for P F A S, okay? And the reason, the, the regulations are going to be changing, we think maybe as soon as by the end of the year, but who knows? And it's expected it's gonna go lower. Some numbers that have been thrown out are four parts per trillion. We won't comply with that, we're complying now, because we're averaging twelve to fifteen. And that's one of the drivers why Mast D E P is, uh, looking to provide us some funding for the, uh, conversations we're having with, uh, pipeline, if you will, from Oxbridge. If we have, if we don't, if we aren't able to make that happen, so alternatives, you know, if we just do, get rid of the, can't get rid of the trihalomethanes, total trihalomethanes, aeration gets rid of them in the storage tank, because they evaporate, okay? Activated carbon filtration would be more six foot by eighteen inch diameter. You know, filter units where you have to constantly remove the media, because it absorbs. The P F A S, that's really what it would be designed to do. It also would pick up these total organic compounds or carbons. So they might have to be changed frequently, but that's, that would be in addition, if needed, that one could consider. Permanganate had been discussed, don't seem to think we need that now. But that's always there, that's the pink water challenge, right? And particularly if you, the pink water challenge, um, I think is greater for Millville, because some, the variation in the iron content and the T O Cs that we have to deal with, that we're able to deal with, with the chlorine treatment, okay? Another one is ion exchange, that's where the McLaur engineering would come into play to help us figure these out. With the existing system, should we not realize anything with Oxbridge? Because Oxbridge has to do multimillion-dollar work before they can even get the water to where we could tap into it. And, and then what amount of grant money might come to Millville from Mast D E P? You know, the million-dollar number's been thrown out, but, you know, one must believe that after one sees it. And even then, the question is if that's enough to pay for what's needed? No, it's not gonna be enough. And so how does the community fund, does the community have appetite to fund the balance, which could be another million and a half, two million bucks? So that's, that's the update. And I also included in your, uh, packets, and I would, uh, refer, recommend folks go back to the website. This, this, what you see up, I just went through, is on the town website, there's an M E S water, um, uh,
Section.
Section, basically. And in there is what I include in your packet, which was question and answers that I gave to a reporter back in, at the beginning of August. And I read through that, after I had sort of gone through this and was prepping to do this for the school. And I thought, holy crap, I, everything I said there is exactly what I'm saying here. So this is what we wanted to do, it, it's on the website, in this Q and A, and this is what we did. And, you know, I think the school, you know, I don't, you know, you may have different opinions, but I think the school leadership were, were, were pleased with the results of where we've come in the last six months with the system. And I, we do have to, you know, I do thank Dr. Gulick. I think, um, you know, he's, he's an interesting person, let's just say that. But he's, he's also a professional in terms of, he knows water better than, you know, your average bear. And so he's, he stepped right in for us the moment we needed it and picked up the ball, learned it, ran with it, made recommendations and made, and affected good change. So we have what would arguably be considered by most good, healthy water, other than total trihalomethanes in the beginning in July. Okay?
So just, I don't know if anyone, I had a couple of comments, so then if anyone else, you know, certainly go ahead. So one thing from the meeting on Thursday, um, there was asked about will we continue to provide bottled water? And I was actually, I sent an email to, uh, Mary Jude Pigsley on Friday about when we no longer have to provide bottled water. I don't know, I don't know what that criteria is that, and I don't think I was clear on this on Thursday, so I want to be clear on it now. We will provide bottled water as long as Mast D E P tells us we need to provide bottled water. So that's, was the request and we will honor that. I don't know if this person remembers it, so I won't use their name. But after one of the meetings, um, with the school committee over the summer, someone said, you know, it'd be disappointing if we moved the kids for one month of bad water. And if you look at the data, we moved the kids for one month of bad water. So that was kind of interesting that that's, it was discussed and that's exactly what happened. I want to thank the community for the support that we've got from the town of Millville and from the citizens of Millville, because we have spent tens of thousands of dollars to make this repair. And at the annual town meeting, we asked for the support of the town at the special town meeting. Sorry, did I say annual town meeting, special town meeting? For sixty thousand dollars additional funds to make sure we're able to keep the water system operating in this positive way. And that was also approved at the special town meeting. So we're getting a lot of support from the community to fix the water. We're getting the funds that we need to do that. So I just wanted to thank everyone for those votes and that support. And I hope you feel proud and happy with the results, because I think we're, you know, we're, we've turned the corner on that and I'm proud and happy with the results myself. So I don't know if there's anything else? Okay. So, um, the one thing from the school, it was, we didn't discuss, well, I guess I'm not clear if the school committee is going to, uh, put the students back or not in the building. I hope that they will. But I was gonna send an email to the school committee and I'll probably C C Peter, and then Peter, if you want to forward it to everybody else, that's fine. I was just gonna make two points. One is just to reaffirm that, you know, we will provide bottled water as long as Mast D E P tells us to. I, I don't think I was clear on that, I want to make sure that I am. And then the second point is just if, when they have the discussion around where the use of M E S next year, I'd like to see that posted on agenda very plainly, to make it clear to parents and to citizens, because taxpayers in Millville have made this additional investment and I would like to make sure that their voices are heard. So I'll send those two things, Peter, L C C, if you want to forward to anybody else. And I think, and I think that's all we really need to say at this time. I don't know if there's anything else, if I left anything out.
One quick question.
Yes.
So what are towns, um, with the expected change in the regulations to P F A S, what are towns going to be doing? Because like if we get a pipeline with Oxbridge, or is there any idea or?
I think they're gonna be dealing with the same challenges that we are. And we will have three years to make the change, is what we're told, okay? So, um, you know, whether it's just the granular activated carbon filters added to the floor space in the, you know, the room there that, uh, the system is, or connecting with Oxbridge, they, uh, will have their own P F A S challenges. So they'll have, they'll have to solve that with various solutions, like, like those mentioned on the last slide.
Yeah.
Okay? Ion exchange or the other thing, the, uh, activated carbon, for example.
So those would be the options to do.
For other communities, that's right.
With us and other communities.
Yes.
Do we have, uh, expected expenses of what those may cost?
No, no, no. But if you, if we put in the activated carbon filters, that's somewhere in the order, uh, I mean, my, the ballpark, I've asked for a ballpark, right? So it's somewhere twenty-five to fifty for the filters and then you have recurring maintenance of replacement. So there's labor and there's cost of media. And, um, because they dispose, they burn the, the, the media to get rid of the P F A S, right? They have to burn that off. So I, I don't, we wouldn't, one wouldn't know the frequency until one starts putting water through it, I guess, is the way I put it.
Twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars to install it and then an unknown maintenance cost.
That's correct.
What is the expected annual cost as, as of right now for the system? Do we have like a estimated?
No, I, I would say we had a hu, a big bump, that's why we went to the voters to raise money. We, you know, it took a lot to get one's hands around this thing. So I, I'd like to say that we're probably in the, you know, a hundred grand or less per year. We were tracking about really sixty for a while there, we thought it was gonna be lower. But sixty was a reasonable number, I think we could probably get back to close to a hundred. Rich would say ten grand a month, but I don't, I, I, I think that's high. Especially if we wind up with sort of a slightly configured team going forward.
Yeah, he was estimating about a buck twenty a year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so questions, so the haloacetic acids are the last thing that we're trying to get under state limits? Is that the last piece?
Well, it's two pieces. It's the total trihalomethanes.
Right.
And the haloacetic acid. So they're both disinfection byproducts, they're two different kinds. That's right, from the chlorine, that's correct.
So the D B two in the column, that's what we do the average of, the one fifteen, forty-four, forty-three, forty-two, and what the average is. and what the averages of those four is, it's sixty-one. If it was sixty,
Sixty, right.
we would be good. It's like, so close.
Yeah, so you'll, you'll have another quarter violation, but so on a monthly basis, your halocetic acids in the
So if you look at the blue square
They're tracking under monthly?
That's correct, yeah, they're half of what the, the limit is, right?
So what's the, when's the next meeting with the school committee? Do you have one, have an idea?
No.
Okay, I, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm just asking, there's, there's no, there's no gotcha here, cuz I was thinking I was thinking, you know, in my head, when we start talking about this back in the summertime, that right around January, so we would start to kind of formulate a plan, it would get some feedback from the school as to what their plans were.
Yeah, part of what they have to do is also budget in their facility needs, right? So they're just entering the budget cycle. And you know, they have a couple of months sort of to finalize that. And one of the big, I don't know how big it is, but to the extent they decide not to go back into the school, you know, that, there's cost savings and, and maybe not, I don't know, right?
Yeah, I guess that's kind of what I was fishing for, we really, really don't know.
No.
Yeah, we don't, unfortunately.
So maybe a follow-up meeting in January, February, possibly?
Yeah, and, you know, like I said
To the email, and that we'd like to have another joint meeting.
Yeah, I think we did that back in February, right? Wasn't it January or February, there was the big joint meeting over at the high school library? Remember that last year?
Wasn't, oh, yeah.
Yep. So I would expect a similar process, right?
Just to kind of measure the temperature of, of the room and see where things are going.
Yeah. And I, and, and as I say, I'm talking to Dr. DeFalco about his budgeting. And I already, I, I think I even said in the meeting the other night, the fir- one of the first questions is, you know, what's the facility plans? Because they clearly have more than they need, they, you know, state that as well. But I think part of the driver of what they do is not just this, it's the feasibility study that's underway, and they may have some inklings of what that's saying already, I don't know, but I, I sense that they might.
Okay.
Right?
And then, one last question. As of, at this point, there are only basically two options, which is, one, keep the system we have, and then get the pipeline? Or are there any others that are still
Oh, well, no. So for example, if you said, well, well, let's put a well, another, dig another well, you're still dealing with the same challenges.
That's what I'm asking, that's what I'm saying, like, there's only really the keep the system we have, or put in a pipeline. Those are the only Mast EP
Yes.
that they're gonna
That's correct.
Cuz we asked her again on bulk water, and she was again, hey, hard no, so.
I'd like to know why. I don't like no without an explanation.
So we did, it was, cuz she didn't
They use that for temporary solutions, how she defined it, it's not a permanent solution.
Well, that's what we want.
Temporary.
All right.
So if we had the, so I will say, if, if we had a plan for the pipeline and funding and all that was lined up, and we said, hey, we're gonna flip over to this pipeline, and I'm making this up, twenty-twenty-six, can we use bulk water through twenty-twenty-six? That might be, that would be a conversation we could have, is the impression I got. I don't, I still don't know if she'd say, I don't know that she would say yes still, yes. That would change, she'd say yes, she'd say no, but that would make it more like, you know, we can be more flexible if you have this more permanent solution. If the, if the, but bulk water is not a permanent solution, basically, is what it is. And we don't have the full, we don't have funding for the pipeline, we don't have like the approval, we don't have all these things, so that's kind of like, we wanna get there, and I think we're all committed to that, but we don't have all the pieces in place, is the problem.
But
But we're gonna get in the place.
But just to clarify, the only reason that bulk water is off the table is because of one bureaucrat. There is no law that says they can't
A one, pretty powerful bureaucrat.
Exactly. It's their personal
I don't know about that, I don't know, they have oversight, but like she said before, she's not gonna give you directives, she's not gonna shut you down, that's the board of health. So the way state agencies work, they have oversight for reporting, but they don't really have the authority to direct you not to do something, they can't command
Andrew's a little doctor.
You know?
I don't like bureaucrats.
It's true.
It's one of those things, it's kind of a gray area.
Yeah.
But
Well, I prefer not to anger anyone too much, so we are doing what I, what I think is best anyway. I hope you all agree. If you don't think what we're doing what's best, you know, certainly speak up, and we'll
So transition to a new water operator, I, we don't have any hippey in that.
Very
So we're not gonna be left high and dry, number one, I have a commitment on that. But, you know, he's obviously anxious to
Hardworking.
go skiing, go skiing. He will continue to be consulting, and I would continue to utilize that consulting service. And so the, the other piece of it is trying to rope an able operator in with whom we've yet to have that discussion.
Yeah.
We're, 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 so I, I'd just rather leave it at that for now, okay? I know who I want, I know who we benefit by. The question is whether that, they want to do it and are available.
Yeah.
So, okay? I don't wanna get on a rabbit hole, but I'll, I'll, I'll leave this thought with you. So the next step would be, if you wanted to solicit services from another water operator, would you go to bid per thirty-B? Would you contact the state and ask for recommendation?
Well
Piggyback off a contract?
Yeah, we, 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 we know who we want, and we've already gone out there
Right.
looking for operators for, you know, this was six months ago, and there weren't, were none.
Right.
Okay? And it was, so I, I guess I just, I, I hear what you're saying, yes.
Maybe you two wanna connect on that, that's fine.
No, that's fine, I, I, I mean, I trust Peter, I know, I know what he's trying to do, and I, I'm good with it. I just, I, I'd like things formalized, and so if I was in your shoes, I'd be doing an RFP
Yeah.
and documenting what the parameters were and billables, so that you, you had a guideline to avoid, I guess, some of those unexpected expenses from testing that may not have been directed to be done, so.
Well, yes, a part of our cost so far has been additional testing, right?
Right.
As you all wanted, actually, you know, it, consistent with what you expressed you wanted to see.
I was referring to the prior guy.
Oh, I, that I understand.
You get my
I wish he didn't get paid, yes.
You got my point, yes. So with an RFP, I think you'd at least have some guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, there was a, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just got
Oh, sure, no, please, Matthew.
Separate from that, but going back to the meeting, our next meeting with DEP, I think, I think we talked about it, possibly having someone from DEP, maybe Mary Jude herself coming down. Because, I mean, when we were at the meeting, just looking around the room, it seemed like they were, you know, happy that we're making progress, but they're still not gonna, it seems they're still skeptic without having that
Okay.
expert testimony, or not testimony, but expert
Guidance.
Guidance.
Yeah, so I did ask her if she could come to that meeting, and she says she couldn't. So they do have their schedule posted, I believe, on their website. So I can look when the meetings are in January and February, and then just ask Mary Jude, and maybe Bob Bastuk as well, like, is there a meeting that they can both attend, one or both of them could attend? So that's a great suggestion.
Cuz we keep, because it's, like you said, back between August and now, the information hasn't changed.
No.
Keep asking the same questions.
Yeah.
It's gonna put
The data gets, the data just gets better and better and better into good, good water, and, but, yes.
Stuff, different voice, definitely.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. Great suggestion, I'll, I'll take that. Okay, departments?
Nothing.
Announcements?
No.
Public forum? No one? Okay, we actually have people here, that doesn't happen all the time. Correspondence, request for live presentation?
Correspondence, no, that, that's a holdover, that's a typo, cuz we, we know they're coming in in January, right? But no, I did, I just let you know, I did get a, a chapter ninety, I think I included it in your packets. Additional chapter ninety funding, a notice of that came in the mail, you know, I opened it today. An extra sixty-four thousand bucks approximately
Great.
on top of the normal allocation, which we got for the year. The normal allocation was a hundred and seven thousand dollars roughly. So, you know, Brian Malali is very good at managing the chapter ninety funding, and how he puts it to good use, he now has an extra sixty-four grand under what they call fair share amendment to chapter ninety funding. It's an additional million, hundred million bucks that they've spread out based on communities' fair share as they define it by certain metrics and stuff. That's extra money that we didn't have yesterday that I knew of, so
Great.
good news.
Minutes?
Nope, none available at this point.
Selectmen reports, Roland?
Nope.
Richard?
So I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Given the current weather status we have going on here, are there any announcements for the residents here? Like, do we have a backup plan if somebody wants to get warm, needs electricity, anything like that? Cuz I know a good part of this town is without power, so.
Do we
We have emergency sites, or the senior center, and also MES if we need it, okay?
And they have power, MES has power.
So that's good to know, cuz, so tonight it's supposed to dip to thirty-five degrees, and
Right.
I just figured maybe we better talk about that just briefly.
Yes, yeah. So I have, the, the Chief Coop and Chief Liard have been out straight.
I know.
And, and, and also the highway department. And so, you know, shout out to all of them for public safety and highway, for stepping right up early this morning to deal with what they've been dealing with. And the, and we're not alone, and the, you know, the surrounding area has really gotten hammered, right?
Absolutely.
So we're, you know, Chief Coop thinks it'll be quick once they get into work on Millville, but they gotta get through the Bellinghams and the Melises, and I don't know what else to get here, and, you know, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna be fixed tonight, so that's why I was bringing this up, if we have
Yeah, so I think the fire department, you know, Chief Liard's the MEMA director, okay, for us? All right, so probably tomorrow to the ex- you know, he and I will be talking about this more tomorrow, once we have a better sense of where things look. And maybe the senior center needs to be open, and it needs to be staffed by somebody.
Well, I think we, you know, we have a van, and we have
Yeah.
You know, maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
Use our resources.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
I'm just concerned with the temperatures, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Are you good, Richard? Okay, Andrew?
Nope.
I'm, I appreciate everyone for wearing their ugly Christmas sweaters for our ugly Christmas sweater meeting. Matthew, anything?
I'm good.
Okay. Town administration reports?
So all I had was just a shout out to the police department, the fire department, the highway department, cuz they really stepped up today. They, they're, it's a thankless job, and guys like me that sit in sweaters that are far too small for them are fat, dumb, and happy, you know, and they're out there working on stuff like this, it's pretty amazing.
They didn't offer to give you a taser and a badge?
No.
Okay, I didn't, is not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to the meeting?
Nope.
Okay, so our next regular meeting will be Jan- Monday, January eighth in twenty-twenty-four. And so I guess I will do the executive sessions.
Yeah, you don't need to do B, okay?
Just A?
Yep.
Okay. So I will make a motion that we enter executive session by roll call. I move that the Boris Selectman enter into executive session for Massachusetts General Law, C thirty-eight, twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy relative to litigation, including but not limited to Datoma versus Town of Millville, where a discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion? So you now call for the vote, Roland Barrett?
Aye.
Richard Brumford?
Aye.
Andrew Alworth?
Aye.
Jennifer Gillis?
Aye.
Matthew Maile?
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you for coming.